Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials with courage and wisdom to do it as right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Ryska. Can we please have the roll call tonight?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt. Mr. Yanez.
Here.
Present.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda as amended by adding Section 9 Ordinance Adoptions and moving Item 8B to 9A and changing all subsequent section numbers accordingly.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Schmidt is not here with us tonight. She had a work commitment and it was scheduled before this meeting was changed from Tuesday to Wednesday, so she regrets she can't be here. She did announce that at the last council meeting, but I just wanted to remind everyone that's the reason she's not here tonight. So first item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much, Mayor. With the spring season upon us and now great weather, I wanted to remind everyone that the Sterling Heights Beautification Commission will once again sponsor its annual plant exchange on Sunday, May 14th, 9:30 to 11:30 a.m. at the Nature Center. The free green event allows gardeners to exchange plants of various varieties, and it's really a popular event and well-attended every year. So again, there are May 14th, 9:30 to 11:30. And feel free to visit our website or call Community Relations at 446-CITY for more information. And speaking of good weather and summertime fun, I'm really excited to be able to announce the Sterling Fest lineup this evening, so everyone can have something to look forward to this summer. And we'll do that by drawing your attention to the following video. So look forward to a very exciting Sterling Fest and all the other normal festivities, exciting festivities that go along with, including the art fair and Restaurant Row and Carnival and Kids' Tent and so on and so forth. It's great to have it back and it's going to be a lot of fun. So reserve the dates, July 28th, 29th, and the 30th. And I really should have saved that item for last because those are going to be tough acts to follow. But the following item on my report, just by way of background, came about at our strategic planning back in January. We had a number of commissions that presented to the city council at strategic planning, including the Sustainability Commission, the African American Coalition, and the Community Alliance Commission. And we were all really interested and fascinated by the good work going on, and the city council requested that all of our boards and commissions come to a city council meeting and talk about the good work that they're doing. We have a couple hundred volunteers in the city, many of them volunteer board and commission members, and they spend a lot of time and effort helping to achieve all the objectives that we have going on and all the success that we have going on. So we're really pleased to start out tonight with our first commissions. We're going to have short presentations, but I know you'll agree when they're done that the work is really impressive. And then we're going to continue this throughout the year, so the mayor, city council, and the audience members too can see this good work going on, often behind the scenes. So this evening, we have our Housing Commission and the Citizen Advisory Committee that's going to be presenting. And our Community Development Director, Jason Castor, is going to lead us off and introduce some of the commission members and highlight the good work. And so, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Castor.
Mr. Castor.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of council, those in the audience tonight, those watching at home. It's my pleasure to share with you tonight a couple of presentations, one on the Citizens Advisory Committee and another one on the Sterling Heights Housing Commission. I will start my presentation off tonight focusing on the Citizens Advisory Committee. The primary goal of the CAC is to provide residents, especially those that are low and moderate income, an opportunity to participate in an advisory role in the planning, implementation, and assessment of the programs and projects of the city. The committee reviews and recommends community development block grant eligible projects to the city council each year for their consideration. This annual action plan was shared with council back in March. The Citizens Advisory Commission meets four times a year, typically on Mondays at 6 o'clock. The hearings must address housing and community development needs, development of proposed activities, and review of the yearly programs' performance. The CAC consists of a seven-member board appointed by the city council and are appointed for a one-year term. Shown here is a list of the current members, and joining us tonight is the CAC chairperson, and the audience tonight is Janet Partello, who has served on the CAC for five years. In addition, Mr. Benjamin Archata is also here, and he also serves on this commission as well. The CAC is governed by the Citizen Participation Plan, which is required by the Housing and Community Development Act. The Citizen Participation Plan, our CPP, requires participating jurisdictions involving citizens and community development activities, as well as other procedural requirements to help manage the Community Development Block Grant Program. The city liaison to the CAC is Teresa Jarzab, in the audience with us tonight, and she was the city's HUD program coordinator, and she is also assisted by Sydney Ailer, who is also with us in the audience tonight. So for the meeting schedules, at the first meeting, generally held in October of each year, the new of the new program year, the election of officers occurs, and the commission reviews the funding request procedures and sub-recipient application. This is to familiarize the new board members with the upcoming process and applications that they will be reviewing. Second meeting, which is held in December, is a meeting where the commission reviews the applications submitted by all sub-receipients. This meeting takes place here in the council chambers, where all the sub-receipients present their requests and allows answer and questions by commission members regarding any requests that they have for funding. The third meeting, which is held in March, is for the commission to discuss the applicants received and select the projects and suggested funding amounts for each recommendation, and that would be sent to the city council for recommendation of approval. Last meeting of the program year takes place in September, and the purpose of that meeting is to review the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report prior to submitting to HUD. So for the allocation of this, the CDB allocation percentages are defined and capped by HUD and strictly followed by the CAC. HUD limits funding each year to a maximum of 20% of the entire project projected budget for administration and another maximum of 15% of the total budget for public services. Generally, all those who complete the grant submission, form correctly, and requested funds are approved for some amount of funding. Capital projects do not have a spending cap and make up the remainder of the CDBG budget, which gives the CACs a little bit of flexibility when allocating money to additional projects. For any activities to be considered eligible, they must meet one of the following national objectives. They must benefit low-to-moderate-income persons, aid in the prevention and elimination of slums and blight, or meet a need having a particular urgency. Most of our projects fall under the low-to-moderate-income objective. As an example, all road improvement projects take place in low-to-moderate-income census tracts, therefore falling under the area benefit. Projects occurring at the senior center fall under the limited clientele because seniors are presumed low-to-moderate-income group according to the HUD guidelines. Several other factors go into project determinations, but the first step is always to determine that the project meets a national objective. The dedicated work year after year by the staff and commission does not go unnoticed. Shown here is an excerpt from October 2021 letter from Keith Hernandez, the Detroit HUD Director for the Office of Community Planning and Development, where he offered a congratulations on the accomplishments over the past year. Mr. Hernandez made note of the use of the Community Development Block Grant COVID funds that were used to assist 44 businesses negatively impacted and the creation or retainage of 347 jobs with that money. This accomplishes all the more impressive since most of the meetings were conducted during the pandemic and via Zoom. Shown here is the amount of funds allocated over the past 10 years to three of the most common project types: public services, road reconstruction, and senior center projects. And that concludes my brief presentation on the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I will transition over into the Sterling Heights Housing Commission. To start, it is important to note that the mission of the Housing Commission is to provide safe, decent, and sanitary housing conditions for very low-income families and to manage resources efficiently. The Housing Commission is governed by the federal government and consists of a five-person board, Board of Commissioners appointed by the city council, and one executive director. With us tonight in the audience is the President of the Housing Commission, Mr. Michael Venetes. He's with us tonight, and he has served on this commission for almost 17 years. So we would also like to thank him for his long, dedicated service to the Housing Commission. That's pretty remarkable for 17 years of volunteer service for one board. So I'd like to thank Michael especially for that. Meetings are held at Shaner Towers on the second Tuesday of every month, and the main role of the Housing Commission is to oversee the management of Shaner Towers in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, which was formerly known as the Section 8 Voucher Program. And Teresa Jarzab with us tonight is also the city liaison to the Housing Commission. Shaner Towers is located north of 16-Monter Road on the east side of Shaner and is actually the tallest building in Sterling Heights at nine stories, consisting of 153 units. Rent is based on 30% of the resident's monthly adjusted gross income, and currently, the average rent is $243 a month. The facility is at 100% occupancy, and there is a waiting list. To be eligible for residency, one must be 62 years of age or older and income qualify based on the limit set by HUD. The Housing Commission employs a management company, The Formidable Group, which provides the staff to handle the daily affairs of Shaner Towers. And with us tonight from Formidable is Sabrina Bollinger, who is the Director of Affordable Housing. For Formidable, thank you for being here. Formidable is a Michigan-based corporation founded in 1975 and has grown to manage various types of housing developments. Today, it manages more than 70 properties across 11 states totaling 7,255 units. They have been managing this property for the Housing Commission for the last 15 years. And within the last 15 years, we've had to go out to contract about three times, as HUD requires us to renew this contract and go out for bids every four to five years. Formidable employs staff that is responsible for the upkeep of the facility and grounds to maintain and bid out all maintenance contracts, which includes all the mechanicals in the building, including heating, hot water, window washing, lawn snow maintenance, carpet cleaning and replacement, painting of common areas, unit turnarounds, et cetera. And each contract is presented and approved by the Housing Commission. Shown here are some amenities Shaner Towers provides for their residents, some of which include onsite laundry, meals-on-wheels congregate dining, and a 24-hour emergency maintenance service. Shaner Towers receives funds from HUD to make improvements to the facility. In the past, we have replaced outdated carpeting throughout the entire building and installed smart burners in every unit to prevent against kitchen fires. We have upgraded the landscaping, added outdoor furniture, and provided two new laptops for the residents to use. Part of the public housing five-year plan, we anticipate additional capital improvement projects, including placing a new roof over the community room, replacing some concrete in the parking lot that is becoming a trip hazard for some of the residents and their guests, and creating an additional part-time activity coordinator to assist the resident council with adding new and creative activities for the residents. And annually, the Michigan HUD Field Office for Public Housing performed an assessment on the Housing Commission. The last assessment has determined that Sterling Heights Housing Commission overall Section 8 Management Assistant Program Score, or CMAP, is a near-perfect 96%. As a result of the commission's score, the Sterling Heights Housing Commission has been designated as a high performer. High performer status comes with incentives like fewer reviews and less monitoring, which are very detailed and time-consuming audits performed by the HUD office. And you get public recognition in the form of a letter from the U.S. HUD Detroit Field Office, and bonus points if there are funding competitions or opportunities that become available. With this, it's just like to say, great job to the Housing Commission for the great job that they've done. 96% seems pretty good. And thank you for your time tonight, allowing me to highlight these two very important volunteer boards.
Thank you. No, I was just going to say very quickly, thank you very much, Mr. Castor, and the city council appreciates the opportunity to get these updates, see the fine work that's going on, and also gives us a chance to recognize the work being done by our city volunteers. Mr. Venetes, thank you again for your 17 years of service, and for all the other boards and commission members who are here in the audience and watching at home. We greatly appreciate the work that you do to help improve the quality of life for all of our residents here in Sterling Heights. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. And just again, a shout out to Teresa, her team in the Formidable Group. They spend a lot of time making sure that that facility is run in a top-notch, first-class way. And to get those sort of scores from a federal agency is not easy to do, so we should all be very proud of that great asset that we have in our city. So, moving on, the next item on my report came from a request from Councilman Yanez back on, I believe it was March 1st. Councilman Yanez requested an update on our recycling efforts throughout the city, specifically focusing on our city facilities. We have many of them, of course. But what I'd like to do now is just take a couple minutes and provide, I shared a comprehensive report with the city council last week, but I want to share just an overview with the public now, just to highlight some of our sustainability initiatives centered on recycling in this presentation, and also a distinction that we recently received because of some of these efforts. So let me start with the more basic recycling programs that we have in our city facilities. And this is no surprise, we see these sorts of programs in a lot of public facilities and even private facilities, but we do have recycling at the city hall, police, library, district court, community center, senior center, nature center, and so on. And these programs have been in place for a while now, but we try to refine them, enhance them as time goes on. And one such way that we're doing that, you'll notice that we no longer have traditional drinking fountains in our facilities. Instead, we have these more state-of-the-art water bottle refill fountains or stations, if you will. These are now all over our public facilities, and the whole idea here is to minimize the use of water bottles. And so far, these stations have saved 72,020 ounce bottles from going to the landfills, and they've only been in place now for about a year since the facility's reopened entirely after COVID. Some of the more unusual recycling recovery efforts that we've implemented in our new DPW building, we were able to save a lot of the old structure and reuse that structure, which you couldn't tell now, but about half of that building now is the frame of the old structure, and we're glad we were able to do that. And interestingly, some may not know this, of course, it has to be done to a very high standard. Our splash pad recycles water and is treated, and that is obviously environmentally friendly, the right thing to do in terms of sustainability, and also creates cost efficiencies as well. In our city facilities, we recycle all of our copy machine ink cartridges and printer cartridges and the like. More unusually, I suppose, would be at DPW, the fact that we recycle all of our used motor oil. The number is what I think is most interesting, and that's 1,600 gallons of motor oil is recycled annually out of our DPW facility. And when we look beyond these more traditional recycling programs and we look at some of the community-wide recycling recovery programs that we have, and some of these have already occurred, the Paper Shred Day, which is incredibly popular, the Hazardous Waste Day. Some of you participated and had to wait in very long lines for these. That's how popular they are, the Electronic Recycling Day, and of course, the Spring Cleanup Days, which are going on throughout the month of May. And we do have recycling implemented at some of our major events. We didn't a few years ago, but this continues to grow. Recycling beverage containers are now at our Music in the Park events, the Farmer's Market Cultural Exchange, and our food truck events as well. And of course, we're trying to expand this and have some creative ideas planned in the future as well. We're looking at eliminating plastic cups at patios and pints, which has become wildly popular, and it's great to see more robust recycling efforts at Sterling Fest, knowing that we have over 100,000 people that attend that event. It's a great opportunity to do even more with respect to recycling. And what we're going to be working on over the next year is establishing better metrics. I highlighted a few of the metrics we have on our recycling program, but we want to identify broad-based community metrics on recycling over the next year and use that as benchmarks as we move forward. We're also looking at a sustainability grant to better identify with our subscription-based curbside recycling program in residential areas the extent of contamination that may be occurring. And once we complete this audit, we'll then be able to develop a more meaningful public education campaign, better explaining what can and cannot be recycled in the commingled system at the curb. Because if there is contamination and those carts are simply going into the landfill, the material in the carts, obviously, it defeats the purpose of recycling. The vast majority of the setouts are not contaminated, but we still have some, and we want to make sure we do all that we can to avoid that. Another thing we're considering a little more long-term is the current curbside program we have right now is a subscription-based program. We have a little bit less than 10,000 people that may participate in that program, but we have 40,000 households. So we want to move to a universal curbside recycling program, which obviously would dramatically increase recycling participation, not only at curbside, but would also then eliminate the need to have the last remaining drop-off center that we have in the city as well, which would reduce costs and create greater efficiencies with that program. would reduce costs and create greater efficiencies with that program. So our current contract with GFL expires in 2024, so we'll be at the table negotiating and thinking about this concept in the next year. So it's not too far off on the horizon. So there is a lot going on with recycling and all under the banner of sustainability. And I wanted to conclude with this last slide, because I think it is reflective of the work that's going on citywide, and thanks to a lot of partnerships as well. It's the Michigan Green Communities, and the Michigan Municipal League has an affiliation with this group, as do communities across the state. And let me just inform you of their mission. The Michigan Green Communities, it was established in 2009 and is a statewide sustainability, benchmarking, networking, and technical assistance program. It is a product of the collaboration partnership among the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, better known as Eagle, and as I mentioned, the MML. Those communities that participate in the challenge can earn ratings of either bronze, silver, or gold. The City Development Department recently applied for our rating through this organization, and I'm pleased to say that we scored a 73, which is a silver distinction. Now, obviously, what we want to do is get to a gold distinction, so that's what we're going to be focused on in the ensuing years. But I wanted to share this update with the community, because sustainability is so important to everything that we're doing. And our Sustainability Commission is also laser-focused on many of these initiatives as well. And we've talked a lot about greening the city with our additional trees, and we're spending much more money on trees and extended bike pathways and non-motorized transportation plans and so on. So it's an exciting time, and it's nice to see groups like this recognize the city's effort. And Mayor, you'll be glad to know I have just one last item on my report, and that is a request for executive session, or closed session, this evening. At the conclusion of tonight's agenda, I'm requesting that the City Council convene a closed session for the purpose to discuss strategy in connection with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement, and to consider the purchase of real property. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel, for that report. Next item on our agenda tonight is a swearing-in ceremony for three new Sterling Heights police officers. I'll introduce our Police Chief Dale Dwojakowski to the microphone for the presentation. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, Members of Council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Tonight, another big night. We have three brand-new hires that were sworn in on Monday. This officially brings us to full staffing, and not just full staffing, our new full staffing. It's the seven new officers that Sterling Heights is hiring. We have them on board now. This is the end of those hires. So we are now seven officers stronger than we have been in years. And as you know, those seven new officers were funded and paid for by the closing of our jail here in Sterling Heights and going directly to Macomb County Sheriff's Department. We are so excited about starting our direct-to-patrol unit later this summer and increasing our community services unit. So it's a win-win for our residents, more officers on the road, and we get three really, really good officers. I've said this before, it's a broken record, but I like to brag. We do a lot of recruitment here in Sterling Heights. We have a six-member recruitment team that travels the state of Michigan, looking for the best and the brightest, and we have three of them here tonight. We had 100 people apply at our last hiring list, 76 people showed up, ended up on our list, and that was easily the highest level of officers applying to any local agency. And they came here for a reason. Sterling Heights has got a great reputation in law enforcement. There is a lot of things for these officers to do from different units and bureaus, and our pay and benefits are excellent. And all three of these officers made the decision to leave their agency and come here to Sterling Heights. And that's not a small decision, when you're spending two, three, four years with somebody to get up, move your entire family here to come work in Sterling Heights, and they're making a 25-year commitment. Because 99% of our officers spend 25 years here. Almost nobody leaves Sterling Heights and joins another police department. So by making this commitment, and we've had a long talk in my office already, they're making a 25-year commitment to the city. So I take that personally. I'm very proud that they left where they came from to come here in Sterling Heights. And a little bit about the three members that we're hiring tonight. To my left, Natan Batu, it's not Nathan, it's Natan, it's not a typo. Natan grew up here in Sterling Heights. Natan came here from Iraq at age 14 and made the move. Was a Stevenson kid, right next door to the police department. He has an associate's degree from Macomb Community College. I had Natan as a student, I was teaching a terrorism class there, and Natan came up to me after class, and he says, "Mr. Dwojakowski, I want to be a police officer." And I was thinking, okay, a lot of kids say that, but very few follow through, because there's a lot of steps to do. Natan did it, he stuck with it, joined the Detroit Police Department in 2019, and from there, he was hired by West Bloomfield, and then we took him from West Bloomfield, and now he is ours, a homeboy, coming back here to Sterling Heights. So we're so happy to have you, Natan. And then Jillian Booker, another great, great story here. Jillian's got a Master's of Science degree from American College. She proudly served in the United States Marine Corps, both active and reserve, for 10 years. She retired at the rank of captain, and then she went on to work for the Farmington Hills Police Department for the last two years. I know Farmington Hills did not want to lose Jillian, we had some conversations with them, but she made the move here to Sterling Heights. So again, a Sterling Heights win. And then finally, Colton Conley. Colton Conley comes from the Bay County Sheriff's Department. He's got a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University. He's married, and he's been with the Bay County Sheriff's Department for the last four years. So a lot of great experience he's going to bring right here, day one, to Sterling Heights. So I'm so proud to have these guys on board, and with that, we're going to swear you guys in. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jillian Booker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that of the state of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
In and for the city of Sterling Heights.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
And that I will strive to maintain the highest standards of that department.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
And with that, I'll have Natan come up to the microphone and say a few words.
I just want to say thank you for the City Council for having us here. I want to thank our Honorable Chief for giving me this amazing opportunity. I've always wanted this. And also, I want to thank my family for supporting me. I couldn't have done this without them, and they know that. Therefore, I'm very excited and grateful for this opportunity, and I'll do my best to protect my hometown, the city of Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Jillian, come on up.
I'd also just like to start out just saying thanks to all of you for having us tonight, and obviously, thanks to the Chief and having us the opportunity to come to Sterling Heights. I'm really, really excited to be part of this city and just everything that's so much more progressive over here and the innovative nature of everything, so I'm just really looking forward to it.
And Colton.
All right. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Mayor, City Manager, and all the City Council members, then especially the Chief of Police, just for this amazing opportunity, and that, you know, I'm very excited to join the Sterling Heights Police Department, and I'll do my best, so. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Chief, thank you. Council, I'll open it up to any comments. Mrs. Sarowski, let me, I don't, I'm pretty sure it's. I'm not sure you're going to mention a certain son of yours who might happen to be a, is he a, he's not a police officer in the armed forces, is he?
In the Navy, I think.
Not the Navy. Thank you, Mayor. So yes, I am going to thank you all for being here and congratulate you all for now being officers in our wonderful city. I am going to, first and foremost, because, one, she is a lady, Jillian, thank you so much for being here. And I want to congratulate you as a former Marine, no, 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 I stepped on those toes. As a Marine, you're never a former, and I know that because my son is a Marine, he's a major currently in the Marine Corps, so congratulations, thank you for being here, thank you for your service, thank you for your continued service to our city, we are very happy to have you. But also to all of you, for Natan and Colton, thank you both for also being here and serving us in the city. We are very proud of our city, but we're also very proud of our officers. And this, as Chief said, brings us up to over full strength. And we were a little concerned when we closed the jail, what was this going to do to our city? Was it going to put us at a disadvantage? Was this going to put us at an advantage? And I think it is at an advantage, giving us more officers on the road and in places of need, where we would be at an ability to give better service to the residents, more safety. So welcome to you all, congratulations to your families, thank you for sharing your family members with us and for letting them take care of us. You should be very proud, we're very grateful, and congratulations again, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Council, anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, welcome to Sterling Heights. You made a great decision. I think it's the best decision you're ever going to make. We have a wonderful community here who supports our police, who believes firmly in public safety. It's really a great city we have here. We're going to expect a lot, but you're going to perform well, because we don't take anything less. And I also want to just thank the Chief, you've brought us another great class of officers. I mean, we really are recruiting the best, and you, with your degrees and your prior work experience, I think you're going to fit in here very well, and you're going to find a city that supports you, but we'll expect you to do your job very well. So welcome, thank you for your service, and we're going to look forward to seeing you over the next 25 years, right, Chief? If I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council, anyone else? I'm getting the stare. I can't tell if it's a yes or a no.
Well, first of all, Natan and Jillian and Colton, welcome to the Sterling Heights family. You're going to find out that, you're going to love it here. We pride ourselves in being a community that's family-oriented, and I'm sure you're all going to fit in just fine. But I also want to thank the Chief for bringing us these new officers that we needed, and it's the best use of our resources, and I think that the neighborhoods and the residents are going to see that it was well worth the sacrifice of the jail. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anyone else? If not, I will just wrap up by congratulating the three of you, welcoming you, and thanking you, thanking your family as well. You know, it's not an easy profession to go into nowadays, and you really need the support of your family and friends, I think, to have your back and help nurture you and get you to this point. We have a reputation here that I think you guys already know about. We're proud of that reputation, we guard it safely, and we want to protect that reputation. So when you leave here today and you go out and work these streets, you are not just representing yourself, but you're representing all your brothers and sisters in our police department, 134,000 residents here. We have the utmost trust and confidence in you, you wouldn't be standing there if we didn't. So thank you for taking on this incredible responsibility. I know it is a sacrifice for your family, and we thank you for that, the residents of Sterling Heights thank you for that. God bless you, stay safe, Godspeed. Thank you, Chief. You are dismissed, and family, you are free to stay for the rest of our City Council meeting, or you can go out there and take some pictures with your very deserving new officers, and maybe take them out for a nice bite to eat tonight, too, or something. Chief, thank you again. One more big round of applause for these three new officers. All right. For those staying, and you don't have to stay, believe me.
We wouldn't expect you to.
You can't leave, you have to stay. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is the budget, which is a public hearing. This is the budget public hearing and adoption. We have a presentation from our Finance and Budget Director, Jennifer Varney. Mrs. Varney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Vanderpoel, Mr. Kaschubski, and Members of Council. The City Charter requires that a formal public hearing be held on the budget before its adoption. So first, we'll have a brief overview of the budget highlights that we've discussed the past month. The proposed budget was submitted to the City Council on March 31st, and since that time, the budget has been available for public inspection on the city's website, at the City Clerk's Office, and the Public Library. The appropriations ordinance was introduced at the April 12th City Council meeting. So for a quick review, the proposed total fund city budget totals $251.6 million, and this slide shows the breakdown between the major fund types. The total fund budget increased 8.3 million, or 3.4% over last year, and the bulk of the increase is due to the funds budgeted for additional road construction and tree planting using American Rescue Plan Act funds, and there is also increased investment in the Water and Sewer Fund and the General Fund. There is decreased spending in the Facilities Improvement Fund, capital projects primarily related to the DPW building spending that was in the current year, reduced contributions to pension and retiree medical funds, and reduced street lighting costs. The General Fund budget totals $117.2 million, and that's an increase of 3.4 million, or 3%. The main cost increases were personnel costs, primarily due to contractual wage increases, replacement vehicles are higher this year mainly due to a new fire pumper that is proposed, we were able to increase the investment in major roads from the General Fund, and there were other inflationary increases in supplies, fuel, and contractual services. And again, decreases were seen in the pension and OPEB contribution and street lighting. The budget that's presented for adoption tonight has no changes from the budget introduced at the April 12th meeting, and as an anecdote, that's been more than 10 years since there's been absolutely no amendments to the budget. The expected General Fund revenues exceed proposed General Fund expenditures by about $300,000, resulting in an addition to fund balance. We have increased fund balance every year since the Great Recession, and the General Fund balance is now just under $34 million, or 29% of expenditures. And again, this is a very healthy level that should allow the city to continue to invest in city services and infrastructure and maintain the low tax rate. The proposed city millage rate for the '22 tax year is 16.38 mils, and that is a decrease of about .29 mils from the current rate. The annual city taxes on the average home is just over $1,400, or $117 per month, and that's about a $5 increase over last year per month. And as you can see, the city's tax rate continues to be one of the lowest in the county. So in summary, the '22-'23 proposed budget preserves the city's solid financial position, reduces the city tax rate, preserves low water and sewer rates, includes over $37 million investment in road improvements, includes funding for a deputy police chief and additional part-time inspectors, fully funds all long-term liabilities, funds a new fire pumper and replacement ambulance chassis, 17 police vehicles, and other public safety equipment, funds technology improvements and diversity, equity, and inclusion training, and funds additional parks and recreation and library programming. The appropriations ordinance is a legislative vehicle that allows for the expenditure of funds throughout the city. The ordinance reflects the City Council's plans for expenditures and revenues and sets the total property tax millage rate at 16.38 to fund those expenditures. The appropriations ordinance was introduced at the April 12th City Council meeting, and the ordinance before you includes no amendments from the original proposal. At this time, we respectfully request the Mayor and City Council for approval of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Varney. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, and good evening to you, the Council, and city administration. Fortunately, I wasn't able to make it last week.
Mr. Inks, if I could just interrupt you for one minute. I need to open the public hearing before we have audience participation. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and you'll get an extra couple seconds now, because I had to cut you off. So, public hearing is now open, Mr. Inks, you have the floor.
I don't plan on taking the full four minutes anyway, so I think I'll be good. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it here last week, but I just wanted to briefly comment on the inclusion of the Flock camera system in the budget. Overall, I think it's a net positive to include this in the budget, but I do- Overall, I think it's a net positive to include this in the budget, but I do have some concerns about the system overall, and just wanted to express those, so the city can consider those if it does end up appropriating the funds at some point. There was some discussion about the lean system last week, and that there are checks in place that if people abuse the Flock or lean system, there are checks in place to prevent that. One difference between the Flock system and the lean system is that lean is state-administered, so there's oversight from the state. If local agencies are abusing the lean system, there are repercussions on the local agency, whereas there is no oversight for the Flock system. So, if this ends up getting implemented, I think it's important that the city go through and put some sort of oversight system in place, because there's not that oversight coming from the state like there is with lean. Another suggestion would be, at the state level, if there's abuses with lean or any of the criminal background check systems, there are state and federal laws in place that criminalize that. To my knowledge, there aren't any laws that would be applicable to abuses of the Flock system, so it might be prudent for the city attorney's office to look into potentially doing an ordinance that would criminalize abuses of the Flock system at the city level. So, with that, like I said, I, I, I'm glad that it's in the budget. I, I'd like to see that go forward, but just wanted to put those concerns to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Inks. Anyone else? Mr. Argada?
Good evening, council. This is kind of a broad and unusual concern that I have. I'm perplexed by the choice to lower the, the city tax rate further. And my rationale for that is that there's been much discussion about various projects that have ongoing maintenance costs that we've proposed in the city. For one was, again, I'm gonna bring it up again, the discussion of the acquisition of Fillmore Elementary as a community center south. And the most common refrain that I've heard during the discussion is, well, we don't know how we're going to afford the maintenance for that. We don't know how we're gonna pay for staffing there. We don't know how we're gonna pay for any number of, of things if we were to pursue that. I think that lowering the tax rate now, when it may have to go up down the line, is setting ourselves up for unnecessary political turbulence. Whereas if the tax rate was kept consistently, when it's already one of the lowest in the county, I, I don't see the same advantage, I suppose, in shifting it up and down repeatedly. Whereas if we kept it as a, at a consistent rate year to year, from what it had been previously, we would both be building up a buffer in the city's coffers for the general fund or for future-year investments, and it would have lowered the amount that it may need to be raised at a future date. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else under this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. And, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarowski.
Thank you. Be it ordained to adopt the annual appropriations ordinance for the 2022-23 fiscal year with the following property tax millage rates. 9.4940 mils for operations, 0.9468 mils for refuse collection, 2.5189 mils for police and fire pension, 2.3850 mils for safe streets, 0.925 mils for recreating recreation, and 0.1096 mils for public improvements, proposal F, for a total property tax levy of 16.38 mils.
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. One matter of clarification on the recreating recreation millage rate. Mrs. Sarowski, I believe you said .9250 when it should be .9257. Is it your motion for .9257 mils?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Is that good enough? Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kaschubski.
It was my intent.
Very well. Okay. So, it's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarowski?
No, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Zarco.
Just one comment. I'm glad that we didn't have any amendments. I mean, I'm sure the entire staff happy. Mr. Argada, it's, you know, we've always had this feeling that we're not gonna take taxpayers' money unless we need it and we know where it's going. And it's not, it's the first time in a long time we've been able to reduce the rate, even though it's, you know, not that big. But it means something that, to let people know that we only want their money when we need it. Nothing further.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Yennis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My apologies for missing the, the meeting last week. It was unavoidable, unfortunately. But I did get to watch the, the tape of the meeting. It took me about 12 hours to get through it. But I did appreciate the discussion, especially on the Flock cameras, and I, I was thinking exactly the same thing that was Mr. Inks just brought up, as I was at home watching the meeting. But all I, all I want to say beyond that is, I really do appreciate administration and all the department heads. You know, this really is a, a testimony to the ability and the, the ability of our staff and the amount of time and effort that they put into this budget, that there are no amendments. And they, they do an excellent job. They always do an excellent job, and I think they need to be recognized for the excellent work they did on this budget. So, I, I fully support and plan to vote yes on this budget. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yennis. And I think all of my comments were summed up at the last meeting, so I have no further comments, and I appreciate. Yeah, Mr. Radke, go ahead.
Before you get a vote, I probably.
Oh, I thought, I thought you didn't want it.
No worries. It's just Henry went first. So, I am gonna vote yes on this budget, but I am still absolutely and completely opposed to the Flock camera system. I think there's a lot more questions that haven't been answered, and I believe if we are going to approve it, we need to, one, limit the amount of time that we, we monitor. So, essentially, instead of a three-day database, I think it should be seven days. I think anything we need to find, we can find in seven days. On top of that, I think there needs to be strict auditing requirements. I, I think Mr. Inks made a great point tonight, that we need to have an ordinance criminalizes misuse of the system. I, I'm still absolutely opposed to it. I think we do not need to surveil our citizens here in Sterling Heights, and this could be a, a good tool for the police department. It also could be used for a lot of negative things. In other countries, they use devices like this to kidnap activists, and they call themselves democracies. Now, we still call ourselves a democracy, but it just depends how much longer, I guess. So, I'm gonna vote yes on this, but I, I renew my objection to the Flock camera system, and I, I would urge my colleagues to really investigate it very closely when it comes before us, because I will be voting no then, too. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Thank you to the administration and for everyone who put their time and efforts into this budget. We appreciate it. I think it accurately reflects the priorities and policies that we want to implement, and I'm looking forward to another successful year here in Sterling Heights. So, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is an ordinance introduction, and this is to consider introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 13 of the city code to reduce the number of members appointed to the youth advisory board and change the timing for annual reporting to the city council. We do have a presentation by our community relations director, Melanie Davis, and our youth advisory board liaison, Marissa Russo. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Mr. Kaschubski, Mr. Vanderpool, appreciate the opportunity to come and share this information with you and to make this request this evening. As you know, our youth advisory board was put together in 2019, and it was placed within community relations for us to oversee. And Marissa Russo on my team had expressed back then an active interest in really working with some of our younger residents and really helping them to engage with their local government. And so, she asked if she could serve as the liaison to that group. Marissa and I worked together for probably the first six months that the group was formed, and we really wanted to make sure that it was, you know, a firmly established group and that was, it was actively moving forward in terms, in terms of creating its strategic plan. And after that time, though, Marissa stepped in as the liaison for the youth advisory board, and she's really worked independently since then to really nurture that group and continue to help them advance their mission. The group has made really great strides. They've done some great things and really worked hard toward meeting their stated goals and objectives. And I think you've all seen a lot of that in terms of the presentations that they've done at other council meetings and at strategic planning. But with that said, Marissa's experience over the past three years has also demonstrated the need for making just some minor amendments to the city code that would make changes that we believe will improve the effectiveness and the efficiency of the youth advisory board, and really ensure that this group is well-positioned to accomplish its goals and objectives that were envisioned by the city council back in 2019. So, with that, I would like to turn it over to Marissa Russo, who is going to share some additional information with you about her experience over these past several years and the requested changes that we're making this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, members of city council, city manager, Mark Vanderpool, and city attorney, Mark Kaschubski. As Melanie stated, the youth advisory board comprises of 20 high school students whose mission is to be the voice of our younger residents here in Sterling Heights. As the liaison of the youth advisory board, I come here today on behalf of the board to recommend two changes to their ordinance. First, we are requesting that the number of appointed members to be reduced from 20 to 13. And we're also requesting that the required annual presentation be allowed to happen at any point during their year. Since the founding of our board, we have maintained 20 appointed members. However, I've noticed this often limits the student's ability to really create relationships that are necessary in forming that team kind of environment that's needed to reach our goals. This past year, I did not see all 20 of my members attending our monthly meetings. I did see a consistent number of 13 members showing up each month, and with that, they were choosing to engage in community events and organizations and really participating in productive conversations during our monthly meetings. I believe that these 13 students who have chosen to participate have allowed us to make great strides this past year and create a solid foundation for our board. I believe that the actively engaged students could make an even larger impact on our community with a more streamlined commission. The youth advisory board did discuss the benefit of limiting the number of members to 13, as we effectively saw progress this past year. The consensus among our current members was to change, sorry, the change would benefit our board and future members, allowing for a more productive, proactive, and accountable board moving forward. Lastly, the current ordinance requires the annual report and presentation to be presented to city council during June or July. They would like this change to reflect, to be taken place at any time during the academic school year, as the summer months is often hard for them to get together and present for you guys. With that, I've opened up any questions that you guys might have. Happy to answer any of that for you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Russo. Appreciate the presentation and the information. Good suggestions. So, we'll open it up to the audience right now, and then if we have any questions, we'll bring you back up. So, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 13 of the city code to reduce the number of members appointed to the youth advisory board and change the timing for annual reporting to the city council.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
I, I think it's been explained well, and I have to say that I remember when we were forming the board, there was always a question of how many members. And we wanted to give anybody that wanted the opportunity, the chance to serve on, you know, that wanted to, would have that opportunity. And we find that it is difficult to find members, to fill up to 20. Okay, my question is, if we're reducing the number of, from 20 to 13, will that be, some of it will be through students that are graduating, going to college, so they would be, they would be leaving the board? It wouldn't be that we would be eliminating members that wanted to be active?
No. So, we're gonna lose six members who are graduating this year, and so we'll have, I think, a remainder of five or six. So, we have positions that do need to be filled, but we're not going to have to eliminate any current members.
Okay, so there, so we're not dismissing anybody?
No.
It would be, it would, we're fine. It would be like through attrition?
Yes. This year, it works out perfectly for us to make this change.
Okay. And then, is there a, a time that you're suggesting would be better to report back to council? Would it be something we did in strategic planning, like we did this year? Is that something that's better than during the graduation months that was originally scheduled?
Yeah. So, when we were presented during strategic planning, that worked very well for their schedule. I know we tried to do it last fall as well. We were in the, you know, kind of the thick of COVID, so it didn't work out as well either then, but towards the end of the school year is very hard with their wrapping up of exams and things like that.
I don't have any further questions. I just think that this is actually showing us the opportunity to change things when we need to. And so, I, I approve of what you're suggesting, because if it's going to make the board stronger, because there'll be fewer people, I think it's a good idea. So, nothing further.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Zarco. Counsel, anyone else? Mr. Radke?
Through the chair to the city attorney, refresh my memory, do we appoint the entire board again every year, or do members continue until they graduate? I'm trying to remember this myself.
Mr. Kaschubski?
I have to go back and look, but I believe they serve a term.
Yep. Every year, they get reappointed. They.
Okay. So, just to be clear with Mrs. Zarco's question, about six are probably gonna, six or seven are gonna reapply next year, and then there'll be some open slots, because everyone else will have graduated at that point?
Yes.
Okay. I, I agree with Councilwoman Zarco's comments. I think that 20 can be unwieldy. If we ever come to a situation where we have someone who wants to be very involved, I'm sure we can, we can satisfy that person and solve the problems, even by appointing alternates, possibly, whatever we need to do. But I think 13's a, a good group, and if they're working hard, then I'm all for it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Mrs. Sarowski?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I would suggest, because knowing high school students and how busy it gets, that they're probably, their, their school year starts getting really crazy about, by the end of March, they're, they should be done. So, I would suggest probably making their report March, because by that time, they don't have time to do anything else. And so, that way, they can wrap it up with us in March, and then they can go about their, their personal lives and their business in April, May, June. And so, that would be my suggestion, was that they would, that way, they can do, do everything they need to do, and they don't need to worry about their commitments to us. And that would, that would be my only suggestion for you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Sarowski. Mr. Um, I'm sorry, Mrs. Kaschubski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair to Ms. Russo. Of the 13, how many are seniors, and do you have a selection from all the schools in Sterling Heights?
So, the requirement is to be a Sterling Heights resident, so I do actually have some students who attend, like, academic schools even outside of the city limits. So, I can't speak. I don't know. I think we have, I don't know if we have anyone from, like, Warren. I know we have someone from, like, Stevenson, and, but I, I don't, I can't say that we are representing every high school. I can check on that for you. Yeah, but we do have, like, we have someone who goes to, like, a Troy Academy and things like that, but the requirement is to be a Sterling Heights resident.
Because when we tried to do this before, what we tried to do was hit all the major high schools in Sterling Heights, Stevenson and so on. And I was wondering, what grades are you drawing from? Are you drawing from freshmen, sophomore, junior, or is it mainly seniors?
I wouldn't say it's mainly seniors. We've definitely had a good group. So, I actually have, like I said, I think I have six that are graduating of my 13. I've kind of lost count of the members that haven't been joining us this past year, but I have six members who are leaving us of my 13 core members, you could say. They'll be graduating, and then I have about five or six remaining. I'm sorry, I shouldn't know these numbers. But they're remaining, and a lot of them have been on as freshmen. That's why it's also kind of a good testimony of them to say that they started with the board when we were having 20 attending these monthly meetings, and now that we've come to the point of we're really having a core group of 13, they can attest that it wasn't productive with our 20 members. So, they've been on it the past three years. I have probably three students that have been with us since the beginning, and, you know, that is our goal to recruit from freshman year, so that we can have that continued membership. So, you know, that is a goal of mine to work and grab them when they're freshmen, so they can, you know, build our group.
That is the best way to do it, to get the freshmen and let them become accustomed to what we're looking at. When you become a senior, you are usually so busy that you don't have time to take on an additional project. So, I think you're doing great doing that. I would like us to reach out to our high schools within the area and see if we can draw more members from there. And 13, I'm, I'm very pleased that we've got 13. And 13, I'm, I'm very pleased that we've got 13.
They're great kids, so I'm excited.
You must be doing a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Yannis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through the chair to Ms. Russo. So what does, what does recruiting look like?
So I would say, like, in the past, we, we have reached out to superintendents of school districts, as well as other connections that we might have within different schools. You know, some are more responsive than others and have been able to generate applications that way. We've advertised in our city magazine a lot through social media, our e-newsletter, you know, word of mouth. Obviously, these students have friends that we've asked them to, you know, communicate out. Some have brought their friends to meetings to kind of learn a little bit. So there's definitely like recruitment. We do have an on-rolling base of applications, so we know that the word is getting out there. We're starting to partner more with Parks and Rec on doing programming and working and collaborating with their teen rooms. So now that we're kind of able to start making a little bit more strides and productivity and things like that, I think we're getting the word out of our organization and kind of able to let people recognize what we're doing. So I think that's a great marketing strategy as well.
Can you tell us if there's been any, anything over the last three years since we developed this program that has changed, things that have worked, things that have not worked? What kind of, what kind of changes have you had to make to the program, or is everything been working well?
So like, I guess you could say, with having a smaller group this past year, I've noticed it working very well, and I think that's why I'm very much wanting to bring this to your guys' attention and make this change. I think that having a very, I don't want to say casual atmosphere in our group setting, but kind of letting it be more conversational, you know, when it first started, I think that it was a little bit more structured. We were bringing in presenting speakers, and this time, I'm kind of asking them, who would you like to hear from? Kind of really making sure that they're knowing that this is their group and their organization. So, you know, giving them a list of public, you know, our administration staff and things like that, that they could invite to our meetings to learn more, as well as, you know, finding out what types of activities they want happening within our communities. So working with the parks supervisors on their teen night outs and their teen school classes, and letting them just know that they are making an impact. So giving them more of a voice and making sure I know where they're, they want their voice to be heard.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Marissa. We appreciate this. You're doing a great job with this group. I know I did have the opportunity to speak to them one time. I think they all look up to you. They, they respect you, and this is a good change, and I'm happy to see it coming forward and hoping it just can, continues to improve and improve. And we, we really do value what they have to offer and present to us, and so you're doing a great job getting that out of them. So thank you for that. And council, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda tonight is an ordinance adoption, and this is to consider adoption of ordinances amending Chapter 12, Article 5 of the city code to modify definitions and hours of operations for body art facilities and Articles 11, 12, and 31 of zoning ordinance number 278 to allow microblading as a primary or ancillary use in C1 and C2 zoning districts. We do have a presentation from our city attorney, Mark Koszywski. Mr. Koszywski.
Thank you, Mayor. At the April 19th, 2022 regular council meeting, the city council unanimously voted to introduce two ordinances that amend the city code to modify definitions and the hours of operations for body art facilities and amend zoning ordinance 278 to allow microblading as a primary or ancillary use in C1 and C2 zoning districts. During the city council deliberations, multiple council members raised concerns that salons, for example, may offer microblading services at varying times to accommodate weddings and special events, and requested an amendment to the regulatory ordinance that would either expand or eliminate altogether the regulation of the hours of operation specifically for those microblading uses. In response to this feedback, a proposed amendment to the introduced regulatory ordinance was prepared and has been attached for city council's consideration. If adopted, the alternative regulatory ordinance would allow for microblading services to be performed within a hair salon, nail salon, and a microblading-only establishment without any restrictions on hours of operation. There are no proposed amendments, however, to the ordinance introduced amending the zoning ordinance number 278 to allow microblading as a primary ancillary use in the C1 local convenience business district and C2 planning comparison district zoning districts. With that, I can address any questions you might have. There are suggested actions. The suggested action two is the zoning ordinance that has no change. There are two suggested action number ones. One, to introduce, or to adopt, I should say, the ordinance as introduced, and the suggested action number two would be for the amendment if council should wish.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Koszywski.
I'm confused. Clear on that?
Well, we'll get to it. I'll, we'll flush it out. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Ms. Rocha.
Initially, I had spoken on it, and I'm gonna say much of the same stuff again. I am in favor of having microblading here in the city of Sterling Heights, and I don't think that there should be restrictions on their hours of operation. Much of the stigma surrounding body art in general is antiquated and not in line with our values as a city today, and I am thankful that the city is looking into reforming its bylaws on this matter. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If not, council, so we're gonna do two actions here, and each of them has alternatives. First one, I would vote no on. The second one, I would vote yes on, for whatever it's worth, for any council member who thinks that's relevant information. So I would like to see the ordinance amending Chapter 12, Article 5 of the city code to allow the hours of operation. So let me be clear.
Alternates does suggested action number?
Yeah, the alternate suggested action number one. No hours of operation, no, no limitations on the hours of operation for microblading. So, council, is there anyone that would like to make any motion at this point?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Radke.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 12, Article 5 of the city code as amended to modify definitions and hours of operations of body art facilities.
Support.
Okay, it's moved and supported.
I don't think that's what you wanted.
That's what he wanted.
That's what you want.
Okay.
It was a woman.
As amended, so it's amended.
It is confusing.
No, but you didn't do the right one.
I did the right one.
Alternate suggested action number one.
Number one.
Would be the one that would say no hours of operation limitations.
That's the one I just.
And that's the one he read.
That is the one.
Okay. All right.
I thought he read.
Someone support me?
I thought you read the one below it.
Right here.
Liz already did.
Okay, she supported.
I, I supported it, but I think you read the one below it.
No, we read the right one. We're good. Right, Mark?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, so no hour, okay, just, can we?
Well, okay. Yes, I got you. I see it now. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Radke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is confusing. I was confused earlier. I had to ask him twice just to make very clear. This ordinance that I just read would say that there is no hour of operations for microblading services. They can be done at any time. Through the chair to Mr. Koszywski, correct?
Mr. Koszywski.
Yes, except so long as it's in a salon setting or a standalone microblading entity itself, not when it comes to tattoo parlors, because they have separate hours of operations that are being amended under this.
Correct.
Draft.
And through the chair to Mr. Koszywski, the current draft that we're under has the hours of tattooing going from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. So I would like to expand it just a little bit further after talking with other cities and some tattoo artists in our city. If I could, I'd like to amend this to make the hours of operations for tattoo parlors from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Just a little bit further expansion, just so people can do what they want. So I move to do that.
Support. Okay, so this is an amendment to this motion to allow any tattoo.
Yes.
Facility to operate between 8:00 AM and 10:00 PM.
Correct.
Is there any discussion on that, Mr. Radke?
Yes, the reason I'm adopting this, so as it stands right now, microblading could be done at any time, as long as it's done in a salon setting. This would allow tattooing to be done in the city from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And that, to me, kind of makes our ordinance basically in line with a lot of other cities around us, and I think if you want to get a tattoo at 8:00 AM before breakfast, God bless you, I'm not gonna get one, I don't like needles, but if you want to, go for it to 10:00 PM. I think that's a, a way to help facilitate business in our community. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, council, anyone else on this motion to amend the motion?
I have to agree to it, right?
No, you don't. I already seconded it. You can vote no on this.
Okay, I'm not.
And then the main motion comes back up.
Okay.
And we vote on that.
All right, that's fine. No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote no. I don't care.
Does anyone? Anyone else? Any comment, discussion on this? Mrs. Zarco.
First of all, I don't have any problem with the hours. You can set the hours however you want. I just want to make sure that if you have five licenses in that facility, that there is one owner who is responsible for that facility. That's my concern. The hours, I, it doesn't matter. I just want to make sure that there's somebody in charge, that if something happens, they're in charge. So I just want to make sure if there's five licenses there, there's one that is the shop license that oversees all of the other ones.
Can you comment on that, Mr. Koszywski?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Absolutely, Councilwoman Zarco, the person who is in, who has the facility itself, if there are five sub-licenses within there, or if there's subcontractors, they are still responsible for who are in their building.
That's all I care about.
Okay, anyone else on the motion to amend? Motion on the floor? If not, all those in favor of the motion to amend signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, six zero. We'll go now back to the main motion, which is essentially no hour limitations on microblading with the change in hours for tattoo parlors from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Mr. Radke.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Since we're having a strategic planning session in the future, I think it would be ripe for strategic planning to really discuss the purpose of our tattooing ordinance and the restrictions incumbent upon it. I mean, right now, we have it, it has to be in a certain sized building, in a certain sized place, and no one at the city so far has been able to explain to me why those requirements are in place, or if there still are making a difference. I know when we last talked about it, the chief of police told me that there's never been called to a tattoo parlor. There's never been a problem in a tattoo parlor. So classifying them as an adult business essentially, and very limiting their scope, I think we're punishing them for something they haven't done, essentially. So I would argue that at strategic planning session, we should really dig in and, if we can, make it easy to do business in our city. Why have a highly restrictive ordinance if it's not causing a problem and it doesn't need to be in place? It seems to be a limitation on liberty that I, I do not like. So I would urge that for the, the city administration.
Okay, I think, didn't we at the last meeting or the one before, we talked about adding a discussion about?
Yeah.
Changes to the zoning ordinance? That would be something I think that would be appropriate during that discussion.
Exactly.
Without any objection from council, I think administration could be directed to add that to our June 11th.
Yeah.
Meeting.
With that, that's all I have. I look forward to voting in favor of this. I think it's gonna be, help business owners in Sterling Heights.
Okay, council, anyone else? Any further discussion? No? Okay, thank you to the administration for jumping on this. I know that this is gonna help some of our business owners out there, and it's gonna be something that's gonna make getting these services more convenient for, for our residents and the customers who live in other cities that are coming into our city for these services. So I think this is a good thing for our city to do. It's business friendly, it's, it's cutting some red tape and streamlining this, so I'm very much in favor of this. So on this action, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the suggested action number two, to adopt the ordinance amending the zoning ordinance number 278. Is there anyone that'd like to make that motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Radke.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending Articles 11, 12, and 31 of zoning ordinance number 278 to allow microblading as a primary or ancillary use in C1 local convenience business district and C2 planned comparison district zoning districts.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Council? No discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? Not council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Koszywski.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next up is a consideration item, and this is to consider a request by Storytime Guild Incorporated for recognition as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a state of Michigan charitable gaming license. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this item? Come on up.
We're friendly.
You figured that's why you were here.
It could just be interested in local government.
Good evening. I'm Laura Dutton, and I'm one of the members of the council for the Storytime Guild, so thank you for your time. We have been an organization founded in 1973 under a slightly different name, and we were under the umbrella of the Community House in Birmingham. During COVID, a lot of things happened and gave us the opportunity to separate and become our own entity. We filed to become a 501(c)(3), and we, you know, our legal address is in the city of Sterling Heights, so we have only been a Storytime Guild for about two years now? Maybe two and a half. So now we would like to become approved with the state of Michigan to acquire a RAF license. So that's why we are here appearing before you. But just so you know, our mission, I think you have that information, but our mission is to encourage the love of reading and storytelling for underserved schools. So in normal times, we go into the schools and read to them and tell stories to them, you know, and we raise funds so that we can donate books to those schools that we go into. We haven't been doing that during COVID, but we are pretty confident that we can get back to that next school year.
And we do, we serve as some schools in Sterling Heights, particularly Holden Elementary, and you were at Sears, right?
Yes, yes. So, yes, that's a good point. We, when we were reading, we were in all three counties, Oakland, Wayne, and Macomb, and I can't tell you how many schools we were in, but the membership is about almost 100 people, and we had about 50 active readers. So even if you weren't a reader, you know, the other 50 were supporting our organization.
And we donated thousands of dollars of books to these schools every year when we were in the buildings, so. A lot of retired teachers, librarians, and luckily, our treasurer was a former banker, so.
That's the best kind of treasurer.
Any questions for us?
Well, very good. So what we'll do is, I've gotta ask the audience if they want to make any comments, and seeing this, there's only two people here, it'll be brief if there's any comments, and then we'll deliberate and we'll call you back up if we have any more questions for you.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation and the work you're doing in our community. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Ben.
Mr. Rocha.
So I was tickled when I saw this was on the agenda. They've spoken at the schools of some of my family members. of some of my family members. I'm really happy that they are still in operation. Thank you so much. And I encourage counsel to honor their request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. It was borderline. It was very close.
I hope I swayed you, not-
You can take the credit. Anyone else? If not, counsel, can we have a motion?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolved that the requests from Storytime Guild Incorporated asking they be recognized as a local nonprofit organization for the purpose of obtaining a State of Michigan charitable gaming license be considered for approval, provided, however, that this action is not an endorsement of the organization, and the city of Sterling Heights should not be listed on any promotional materials associated with their charitable gaming activities.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Zarco?
Well, first of all, I'm an avid reader. I have a daughter that's even, she reads more than I do. But I've always thought that if you learn to read, you have everything you need to learn everything else. And it's the basis of any kind of education. And when you have knowledge, nobody can take it away from you. It's just, it's yours. So, I support, I, sorry, but I've never heard of your organization before, but I certainly support what you're doing. There's a need for it, and I'm grateful that you have the volunteers that will go into the classrooms. I'm hoping that you're very successful with this raffle, and I'm hoping that you'll let all of us know when the raffle is so we can buy a few tickets. So, I'm wishing you luck in your endeavors, and I know that you're making a difference. So, thank you so much.
That's it. Nothing further?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor Taylor. And I also really applaud this. My sister-in-law would dress up as Mother Goose and go into different classrooms in the Chicago area, and she loved to read to the kids. And so, I think that this is just a wonderful thing. I also am an avid reader. I, even on my lunch hour, I'm reading a book. Granted, it's on my phone right now because they don't know what I'm doing. And so, which is sneaky. But I love-
On your lunch hour?
I get a lunch hour now. I love it.
That's your time.
It is my time.
You could even read a real book.
I could, but then, but then they would call me out. No, I can just, anyway.
What are you reading?
Don't interrupt.
The father's there? Is that demanding?
Shh.
Okay, sorry.
My time. Shush. So, anyway, so, yes, I applaud you. I think this is wonderful, and kids love to be read to. And that is a gift that we can, that can never be taken away, even the reading to them. And reading is such a gift. My mother-in-law has macular degeneration now, and she can't read, and that is killing her. So, we read to her, and she loves it. So, I applaud you and thank you for doing this. And yes, please let us know when you're raffling off, selling those raffle tickets because we will buy some. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. No shushing.
Why do you always interrupt me?
I don't always interrupt you.
Lately.
Mrs. Kosky.
No, I was just agreeing with her. Yes, you do.
It's your fault, Mike.
The last time I didn't interrupt, I just kind of interjected before you started.
Isn't an interjection interruption?
No, it was, she hadn't started yet.
Okay.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for the opportunity for this very fruitful discussion up here, ladies. We appreciate that. In all seriousness, this is a very great cause that you're participating in and that you guys are spearheading and leading, and we thank you for that. Hopefully, that now that things are opening back up, you're back into the schools. And I mean, I know we did our best when things were virtual, but certainly things like this, like reading and getting, especially to the younger kids, you know, having the ability to interact in person is really very helpful and important to their development. I know I have three young children myself, and so, I'm always constantly trying to tell them about how important reading is and how I wish I could just come home and have two hours to read to myself with nothing else to do. It's, so, that's a struggle with some of my kids with all the other distractions that they have. So, you're doing really good work because as, as both Mrs. Sarowski and Mrs. Zarco said, these are things that really give you the tools to be able to be a successful adult. And so, we wish you good luck. You're obviously a local nonprofit doing good work in the community, so you have all of our support. If you need anything from us, please let us know. So, counsel, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right. That completes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda? Ms. Rochada?
All right. Last you're hearing from me for tonight. So, I've been following the news, as I'm sure you all have, with regards to the crisis in Ukraine. I wanted to again thank the city for your support that you've lended in that. I have read in the news recently that the cities of Lansing, Grand Haven, and Clinton Township have elected to raise a Ukrainian flag on city flag polls. I have an American-made Ukrainian flag. If the city is interested in following suit as well, I'd be happy to lend it to you free of charge for you guys to use.
Yeah. Give it to the city clerk. And I think that I can speak for all of us that we'd be happy and proud to do that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll close that portion. Go on to reports from city administration. Mr. Vanderpoel, anything for tonight?
Nothing further, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Kachubski?
We do have two items for closed session tonight, Mayor.
Okay. Counsel, I'll open it up for reports. Mrs. Sarowski?
Yep. I'll take the first jab at this. So, I want to thank Mr. Rochada for the flag. I've been flying a Ukrainian flag for quite a while, flying it, you know, not next to my American flag because I always fly the American flag. But it is important. I think it's a really good sign of support. I do have very close Ukrainian friends that I need to make sure that they understand that they're supported. So, I think that it's a good sign if any residents in the city would also support that. I believe there's a company in Clausen that makes Ukrainian flags. One of our very esteemed residents, Paul Smith, told me about that and made it quite clear that he bought his flag from there. So, I'm just going to throw that out there. But they, we, whatever we can do to support the Ukrainian community, I would really encourage. They are certainly neighbors a distance away, but we, we need to support them. So, thank you again for that. And I don't really have anything else. I do want to say I'm very happy with our Sterling Fest lineup. Jefferson Starship is a band I love, so I'm really excited for that. And then Uncle Cracker, Local Boys. So, this is, this is going to be a good, this is going to be a good Sterling Fest year, and I'm looking forward to it. So, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Mr. Radke?
Well, I have to echo Councilwoman Sarowski's comments. I think that it, I love that Mr. Rochada brought a flag.
Yeah.
Talk about not just asking for something, but really coming ready and prepared. It's a really nice gesture, and I think we're going to fly it. It's going to be a very nice sign of support for what is going on in Ukraine. We have a, not as large as Warren, but we have a large enough Ukrainian community here, and I hope that they understand that we stand with them against tyranny in Ukraine right now. I'm also excited for Sterling Fest. I'm excited to kind of get back to normal. I've missed meeting with my neighbors and throwing baseballs at the mayor in the dunk tank and really, I spend a lot of money. I'm not kidding. I like how you said throwing, not hitting. That's why I spend a lot of money. But it's going to be a great time, and, you know, it really is a way to show off the jewel that is our Dodge Park. And I'm so excited that we had a couple of traffic studies involved there today in our packet to really, hopefully, make this entire area safe for pedestrians. So, when they, not just come to Sterling Fest, but when they come to the park every day, they don't have to be afraid of being struck by a car. So, I think that these safety improvements are really going to do a lot for our local high schools and for Dodge Park. And with that, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Radke. Anyone else? Mr. Yana?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city administration for their presentation on recycling. Most people don't know, but recycling or what they call the circular economy is worth $9 billion a year. There's a number of Michigan businesses that use recyclable material as feedstock for their businesses. And the more that we recycle, the more recyclable material that's out there for those businesses to use. So, I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the documentation that was sent to us in our confidential's. And I know that the real stress test is going to be this summer, people using the parks and Sterling Fest. And I appreciate some of the suggestions that our Parks and Rec Director has made on potential ways to solve that problem. So, that's all I have to say. But thank you very much.
Okay. Mrs. Zarco?
Oh, thank you, Mayor Taylor. Mr. Rochada, thank you so much for the flag, for starters. And I think that probably what is going on in Ukraine is on, you know, not all of our minds, that we're trying to find out how to help. But I also want to, when I, when I, you really think about this, is first of all, freedom's never free. And even though we aren't there right now, if I have to pay more for gas, I'm going to pay more for gas because I know that's the cost of freedom, because we want people to be free throughout the world. I also want to say that I stand with the Polish people for helping the Ukraines because there are so many millions of refugees that have come into that, took to the country where they have actually opened up their homes. It isn't that they put them in a stadium. It's not that they're putting them in a gymnasium. They were actually opening up their homes and housing people that are strangers that are becoming part of their family. My favorite charity since all this started has been the World Central Kitchen because they are feeding people. They're feeding people in Ukraine, and they're feeding people in Poland. And I don't know what other areas of the, you know, right now, that's their concentration. Normally, they feed people all over the world. So, so when I hear people say, oh, the gas prices are up, my first thought is, I don't have a tank coming down my street. And that's what I'm grateful for. So, whatever we can do as a community to stop World War III from happening, count me in. So, right now, I stand with the Ukraines and anybody else that's supporting them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco. Anything tonight, Mrs. Kosky?
I was just going to add that if there's anything that we can do for the Ukrainians, could we possibly post it on our website if there's any place where they might donate funds or anything to assist them in any way? I'm not familiar with any organizations that are actually doing collections, but if administration is aware of any, I think that would be another way that we might be able to assist, assist those in need. Just give them a number to call so that we know it's a good charitable organization that the funds are going to get to them. And if we know where flags can be purchased, add that number also. That's all. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. Just one final thing for me. I want to say to our Mayor Protem, Mrs. Sarowski, to Mrs. Kosky, to Mrs. Zarco, and to Councilwoman Schmidt, as well as to my wife, my mom, my grandmothers, I wish you all a very happy Mother's Day coming up this Sunday. And to Ms. Riska, Ms. Sabasky, and everybody, all the mothers in Sterling Heights, we wish you a very happy Mother's Day and hope you have a great weekend. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session. So, moved?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Riska?
Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Sarowski?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Yana?
Yes.
Zarco?
Yes.
Kosky?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries six zero. We will adjourn into closed session. We will not be returning tonight. So, thank you to everyone who came out and participated in this meeting. We are adjourned to closed session.